Hi, welcome back everyone. We're going to continue with our participants' discussion in a few moments. But as you will have noticed, two of our accountability panel members have left us. They are actually in private session at the moment, studying the case so far and looking at the possible findings and outcomes and recommendations. But we are happy to still have with us Judges Isaac Leenaola and Judge Diego Garcia Sayan and Misha Glenny as well. They're all going to be here while we continue our discussion with the expert and NGO representatives in order to listen in on the conversation and take their input into account when it comes to their final deliberations this afternoon. It's now my pleasure to invite onstage Rob Perry Jones, who is the leader of global policy at the Wildlife Crime Initiative, and Gillian Dell, head of the conventions unit at Transparency International. Welcome to you both. Gillian, thank you both very much for joining us for this part of the discussion. Rob Perry Jones, just saying a moment ago, you are with the Wildlife Crime Initiative. Listening to the evidence yesterday, listening to the conversations so far today, what do you think we may still be missing in our overall approach, understanding of the issue? How we get to the root causes and whether or not this kind of setting, this public hearing, is the right approach? Whether more of a softly-softly approach might be necessary or a more robust muscular approach to get the authorities in Vietnam to act?
Thank you. This is working, yeah. First of all, thank you for having me up here. I'm sorry for the question.
Well, I know it's a long-winded question, but essentially, any gaps do you find so far in what we've been talking about and whether you think this is the right approach this time for the public setting?
I've been working in this field for about over 20 years, and we've seen constantly cases come to be presented in front of normative structures like societies, et cetera, to governments, and not getting as far as they can. So I think this is elevating it to a certain level, getting more political traction in there. I think what we've heard in the discussion today, but was touched upon some of the bigger issues, I think, and we heard in your introduction and also from Judge Noguchi, is the links between wildlife crime and other harms to society through human trafficking, through drugs. And I think it's very important that we place this entire discourse in the broader framework of a sustainable development agenda. And we have the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development, we have the STGs, and we have a very coherent policy framework in that, which demonstrates and draws the linkages between corruption, illicit financial flows, poaching, harms to oceans or fisheries crimes, et cetera. So I think we need to keep, maintain that broad scope. I think that brings in the elements also that have resonance with government.
You mentioned the kind of public discourse that usually takes place. How we shape that discourse matters, doesn't it? I wondered to what extent you might agree with those skeptics who think that, for example, the approach of publicly shaming Vietnam and embarrassing it into action essentially may not work? Or you of the school of thought that believes that, in fact, you must put pressure on the authorities to do much more than they are currently doing?
I think it's a very fine balance. I think it is a difficult game. I think there are, you can find yourselves in a forum where you have governments who will put forward, and basically go through the motions, and you need certain instruments that have teeth to be able to take the discourse forward and to see actions taken. If things go too far, you can also see a backlash. You can see countries coming together and saying, “Well, hang on, we don't have the capacity, we don't have the resources. So this is very unfair, the way you're doing this. Plus, why are you singling out this one country when there are other countries there?” So the point to look at is the tipping point. At what point does it become too much for the international community to say, “No, really, there's a real weight of evidence here, and some action needs to be taken.” But I think it needs to be a balanced action, as we've discussed yesterday, in terms of political pressure, in terms of providing assistance in capacity and in training, et cetera.
Gillian Dell, the issue of corruption, how key is this in tackling wildlife trafficking in Vietnam in this instance, in other countries as well? But just yesterday, looking at the evidence that was presented here as part of the map of facts, there was clear indication coming from some of the illegal traders in the village of Ni Khe that they seem to be in cahoots somehow with law enforcement officials who at least patrol the nearby villages and Ni Khe itself. To what extent is corruption a key issue here?
Well, I think the evidence shows, and the government of Vietnam accepts this, that corruption is a huge problem in Vietnam. It acknowledged this in recent statements and in a recent report prepared together with the World Bank. Key institutions affected are law enforcement and the judiciary, as well as the rest of the public service. And a global corruption barometer survey that Transparency International did in 2013 shows that those surveyed also found that, in particular, the police service is considered to be corrupt or extremely corrupt, but also the judiciary, and that people consider that it's not possible to get a fair hearing if you try to take a case to court. Now, the fact is that Vietnam has been growing by leaps and bounds since the '80s, and in recent years, there's been a huge increase in foreign direct investment in Vietnam. And I want to point out, because we're thinking about solutions for business in general in Vietnam, also locally based, as well as those investing in Vietnam, the lack of reliable law enforcement and judiciary is a serious problem. And this can potentially be very motivating for the government, because obviously, they are interested in seeing the economic growth continue.
And are we thinking mostly of neighboring countries, perhaps Japan, providing financial assistance and development assistance as well to Vietnam, and the kind of leverage it could have, the importance of enlisting a country like this, but also the US, the World Bank, and others?
Exactly. So Japan is one of the main investors in Vietnam. It's also one of the main providers of development assistance. And as I heard, this is not my subject, but I heard that they have come on board in terms of seeing the harm and the undesirability of trafficking in rhino horns and other wildlife. So they are potentially a very good ally in this, together again with companies investing. And by the way, the government itself also recognizes that there is popular demand to have a more reliable and effective public service. So they're getting pressure on many fronts in this way, and that could be leveraged.
But are we seeing any real clarity, though, about the kind of role, the kind of impact civil society can have in campaigning against corruption?
Well, this is still a problem. This is still a step to be taken, because the status of civil society in Vietnam is at best ambiguous. And so they, you know, there isn't a vigorous voice for people channeled through civil society organizations, although we do have a very good chapter in Vietnam, which is working on the issues. And we see that there's a little more space developing. There's a professor at the Economics University in Ho Chi Minh City who recently was talking, very frankly, to an international audience about some of the problems in Vietnam, both in terms of the judiciary and in terms of cronyism in the public service.
Rob, I know that you believe that the next generation of Vietnamese might hold the key here in this debate.
I missed that part.
I know that you put a lot of emphasis on the next generation of Vietnamese. How much of a difference could they make in this debate? If not now, perhaps down the line?
I think there's no silver bullet. I think that's what we're hearing through today and yesterday, that we need a multifaceted approach to a cross-sectoral, multidimensional problem. So the next generation is extremely important. We have to look towards education and, as we heard this morning, behavioral change at the current generation, but also the younger generation. So that needs to be targeted. But we also need to be cognizant of where cultural identity sits, and that food and medicine are intricately linked to one's own cultural identity. So we need to keep that in mind as we move forward, too. So I definitely think that is important, to invest in the younger generation, definitely. I want to pick up also on one part that Gillian mentioned, we talked about with the civil society anti-corruption. I think it's extremely important that we look at this, and there's good examples from Tanzania. I think there was a study done on corruption in the timber industry that was conducted in collaboration between the donor development agencies, the government and traffic, and it highlighted some of the challenges in the governance structures. And it resulted in a civil society campaign, which then led to examining the value chain in the timber sector. So I think it's, again, it's bringing all these points together.
And with this problem also touching so many people in so many different countries, I think it's useful to now get a view once again from India, this time from Vivek Menon. And I do apologize that the audio on this isn't particularly good, but we have translation.
My name is Vivek Menon. I'm the executive director of the Trust of India and the founder of the trust, which started 20 years ago. The rhino is really on the brink of extinction. The focus, the elephant or the rhino is always on Africa, which you don't realize, that Asia has three species of rhino. Our rhino, although among the three, is doing better, but they're actually holding on to it by rangers sleeping with two guns on each side. Now, Vietnam, when I did my work there in the late '90s, everything was good. I had seven tiger skins being sold to me while I was learning Aka in Ho Chi Minh. And when I first went to Vietnam, Vietnam had definitely a few hundred elephants. But then I have returned after ten five years, it's almost not like a koopra is extinct, a sahala is possibly extinct, a tiger, according to me, is extinct, except Vietnam is not. Like, they didn't, yes, the Bodhi has just declared it extinct, but in all possibility, the tiger is gone from Vietnam. One of these tigers are not coming from Laos. The elephant seems to be about 50 left, and only one herd of about 35, everything else in ones and twos. It's on its way out. So these are all indications of very high poaching pressure even within Vietnam. So it's not that Vietnam is only a trade hub that is sucking up India's rhino. They're almost vacuuming their own. So I think it's a matter of great concern, and the only ray of hope is the education awareness activities that the Vietnamese are now doing. And I'm not saying that the political will is real. I know that there are some statements there, and there's a conference where they're up in there, and the world's going to focus there, and maybe that will also make a change. But I'm less hopeful about that. I'm only hopeful about the fact that I'm seeing more Vietnamese young people talking about loss of animals, talking about the fact that this is my population. I can't prescribe to it, but we have seen Taiwan cleaning itself up. I think that's an example that we have happened to. They are in the same geography group, and if Taiwan, which is absolutely horrific trade in Vietnam in '90 before the Pelle amendment, before the sanctions hit them, but they cleaned themselves up completely. So Vietnam, if it wants to toughen its enforcement handles, so it's a combination, I think, of that political will and the youngsters coming out and saying, “Yeah, I'm going to do this after.” From what little I've read about it and understood, the investigation, it seems to be horrific scale. Just the scale is shocking. I'm not shocked by any one of those things being traded. I'm not shocked by the fact that it's happening in Vietnam, that this is all that. But what is new is the scale and the numbers that you're finding. Shows that really, it's absolutely critical, absolutely critical that we address Vietnam's illegal trade today. So it does affect global population.
So Mr. Menon, they're talking about the importance of political will, which we've been discussing a lot, giving the example of Taiwan successfully cleaning up the illegal wildlife trade sector, and saying how if Vietnam had the political will, then it would be able to eradicate the illegal wildlife trade. He also mentioned the impact sanctions can have, and specifically mentioned the Pelle Amendment in relation to Taiwan. Rob Perry Jones, as a global expert in wildlife, but also as someone who knows quite a bit about the CITES trade sanctions mechanism, explain to us a little bit what the Pelle Amendment is and whether or not it can and should be used in relation to Vietnam.
Thank you. The Pelle Amendment, it takes me back to where I started in this field, because that was, my first trip was to Taiwan, just when this whole process was going on. In short, I think Tom touched on it yesterday, it's a provision in US federal law which enables the US government to take measures when they feel that country is undermining effectiveness of a conservation program such as societies. So in the case with Taiwan, they felt it was deemed that it was undermining the effects of societies with regard to rhino horn and tiger bone. Sanctions were taken, which in this case was an embargo on trade in any wildlife product from Taiwan to the US, so it's a bilateral measure. And it resulted in Taiwan taking measures to adopt its stronger penalties, to take enforcement actions, make seizures, and reduce the availability of tiger and rhino horn. And on that basis, it was then lifted in 1995, they took the sanctions off and said, “Okay, that's fine.” Should it be taken against Vietnam? I think we should look at the broader context, where we stand at the moment. To the best of my understanding, a petition has been submitted to the US government, I think, regarding Vietnam's status, and there's no timeframe within which they have to act. So having that process, there's value in that action, there's value in that process being there in the background. But also within CITES, recently, at the Standing Committee, we had the 67th meeting of the Standing Committee to CITES, they agreed some actions that Vietnam had to undertake in relation to its trade in rhino horn, and that included enactment of its penal code, included establishing a national interagency task force, and then to report on arrests, seizures, prosecutions, et cetera, a number of other points. At the CITES Conference that was held just following that, the CITES Secretariat was directed to undertake a mission to Vietnam to look at these points and to look at the implementation of these actions. Now, within this whole process, there's a compliance mechanism that can be triggered if Vietnam does not meet these requirements. And that compliance mechanism essentially can come down if the parties want it to the imposition of sanctions. So on the one hand, the Pelle Amendment is a bilateral trade measure, and through CITES it would be universal amongst the parties, the 180-plus parties, and they would be requested to refuse imports from Taiwan. So that would affect, it's a global measure. At the same time, we have the Hanoi Conference coming up. So there's a lot in the background going on. There's also, Vietnam is a category-one status country, as Tom Merican noted, in the national ivory, national implementation of ivory action plans, which means it has to undertake, develop an action plan to implement those steps, and that can result in compliance measures, too. So there's a lot in this process. They're not mutually exclusive, and they can work together, so...
Yes, but I wonder what you think, Gillian. I mean, could sanctions be counterproductive at this stage? There is a lot going on, and as we noted yesterday, and Mr. Azna noted, there were a few positive steps that have been taken lately by Vietnam. But if corruption feeds into much of this illegal trade in wildlife, would it be useful, perhaps, to take on one of these mechanisms in order to address this type of issue?
I think it could be in the arsenal, but I don't know enough about what has already been tried to comment on that. But I would say that it looks like, for a variety of reasons, some of which I've mentioned, because of trying to improve its governance and its economic climate, that the government of Vietnam is motivated to make improvements and to preserve its, or improve its reputation. So I certainly would want to see about the possibility of trying other measures first. One avenue is through the UN and Convention Against Corruption review process. Vietnam is coming up for a review next year on issues to do with how its public service is functioning, its judiciary and prosecution services, and the integrity of those. It's already been reviewed on its criminalization and enforcement and found quite deficient and has asked for extensive technical assistance. So it might be an idea to let those processes take their course. However, I do understand, and I think the video material we've seen really underlines that, that we have a very urgent situation here. So I do see the point that we can't wait too long, but I hope that there is enough dialogue going on to emphasize that because of the urgency of the situation, people may feel compelled to take the most drastic measures.
Did you want to add anything? I just also wanted to remind everyone, as we mentioned yesterday, that this public hearing, really in a sense, was the last resort, I understand, for the Wildlife Justice Commission. It all began as an issue of dialogue and trying to enlist the cooperation of the Vietnamese authorities. Sometimes this is what it ends up looking like in order to put more pressure. Any more thoughts on this before we perhaps turn the floor to our panel as well?
Thank you. Just one quick, two quick points. One is on the process so far, the findings of the Wildlife Justice Commission. I think my reading of the documents in the Standing Committee and the Conference of the Parties of CITES is this has, the information from here has influenced the outcomes, it's influenced these processes within these normative structures, and I think that's a very good step. It's about taking it further. Now, Gillian raised about the urgency of the situation, and I've noted the mechanisms under CITES. I think for me, the concern is that this is not just about ticking the boxes. We've done this, we've written a report, we've made a few seizures. It's about digging deeper and getting down to what are the fundamental issues. And I mentioned the Sustainable Development Goals, and Gillian's talked about corruption here, and how do we bring those linkages together? How do we look at the financial aspects of the movement of money, the illicit flows from Africa, from Asia, et cetera? Earlier, they said that there was the UNGA resolution on wildlife trafficking that was adopted, and that does call upon the parties to consider the appointment of a special envoy to look at wildlife trafficking. So I would put my question to the accountability panel is that what are their views on having a special envoy that could be appointed by the Secretary General? And is that something that with their considerable weight and status, they could take that forward? Because this is about making sure we draw those linkages, making sure we get down to what are some of the root causes, and that's getting back to communities in the countries, but also the financial flows, corruption, et cetera.
So a question for our esteemed panel members. I wonder if anyone wants to take it on? Judge Misha Glenny.
A brief clarification. When you talk about a special envoy, a special envoy to where? To Vietnam or to all the countries involved in the...
I would not, I wouldn't think it should be country-specific. I know you can have some that are country-specific, but I would think this should be on a more thematic basis.
Issue-specific.
But specifically about the trade in rhino horn or ivory?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think it should be looking at wildlife trafficking, and if you're looking at wildlife, I think you should be taking that in the broader scope and not specifically on any species, but it's about drawing the linkages between, and take it out of the environment portfolio. This is not just about environment, it's a development issue, and that brings in a lot of different actors into this dialogue.
Any other thoughts?
I have a, sorry, I just have one question. Several people have stressed the importance of the youth of Vietnam as a driver of social pressure. Vietnam and China are amongst the top two users of social media amongst young people, and of course, Vietnam has a fairly youthful population. Are you aware of any campaigns driven through social media in Vietnam about this subject? So for example, the film that we saw gruesome though it was at the beginning of today, if that were distributed virally through social media in Vietnam, are there any sort of projects? I know that there are projects by some people working in Vietnam to try and secure the integrity of networks and social media in particular, who may be open to sort of discussing this sort of thing. So I just want to know if you have any idea what the general sort of comms situation is when it comes to social media and this issue in Vietnam?
Yeah, very important question, also to counter the illegal trade that goes on on social media, as we saw yesterday with WeChat and others.
That would be a question I would direct more to Steve, who's up here on the demand reduction side. I'm not aware of any that, or I would say in messaging, if we're talking about the type of videos, we had the youth ambassadors here yesterday who had completely opposite type of video that would be portrayed in this scene. So I think I would leave it to a more informed person than myself to comment on what type of social media would be used.
Judge Diego Garcia Sayan.
Yes, one question regarding the last report of Transparency International and its recommendations regarding specifically Vietnam. Of course, not addressing specifically the matter we are dealing in this public hearing, but regarding corruption in general terms, the agenda is quite ambitious. The agenda proposed by Transparency International, it says, “A new law on asset declaration and disclosure, a new law on asset recovery, a new law on accountability of the leaders of public institutions, whistleblower protection, and social engagement.” So these five points by itself are big, not technical, but political agenda. So while that ambitious agenda, of course, has its relevance, regarding specifically the corruption connected to the matters we are dealing here, so to deal with corruption with the local police, with the police in the borders, what would be more specific recommendations from Transparency International besides the general approach that corruption shouldn't exist? But what specifically would be concrete steps, not to undermine this very ambitious agenda, but to think in specific aspects that could be eventually proposed by ourselves?
Well, I'm going to put one on the table, which is almost in the nature of, it would be experimental. So we know that the situation of wildlife crime involves complex networks. That hasn't been possible to show here, and that these networks are using corruption, that's part of their modus operandi. We are currently proposing consideration in a wide range of countries and at international level, the... range of countries and at international level, the adoption or introduction of a crime of grand corruption, which in popular terms, we describe as the abuse of high level power that benefits the few at the expense of the many, and causes widespread harm to individuals and society. And I think we can include the wildlife crime in, at least in the society. And we know also that precisely this kind of corruption goes unpunished very often. Now, and I've also said that I think that Vietnam should demonstrate, and you know, before steps are taken against it, should be given the opportunity to demonstrate in a dramatic way that it's taking steps. So one dramatic way to show that it's committed to change would be to introduce such a crime and to create special procedural arrangements around the use of it. For example, because of the corruption in the law enforcement and judiciary, it might make it possible for ordinary citizens to bring a private prosecution based on grand corruption, and for there to be perhaps special judges known to be people of integrity to be assigned to judge those cases. And then specifically, cases could be brought precisely on the wildlife trafficking that currently is a crime that receives, is handled with impunity.
Gillian Dunn and Rob Perry Jones, I want to thank you both for your invaluable insights and the ideas you've put on the table for us to think about today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, our final two participants are Polly Higgins and Daniel Turner. Can I invite them both to join me here on stage? And let me just say that Polly Higgins is a barrister for the Earth Community Trust, and Daniel Turner is an associate director at the Born Free Foundation. I hope I have them both. Polly is unfortunately stuck in traffic, so she will be making her way slowly. But we will begin our segment nonetheless, and the pressure will be all on you, Daniel. And I'm sure you can take it. So, all right. So Daniel, yeah, I just mentioned that you're associate director at the Born Free Foundation. Now, you've worked on campaigns on wildlife crime, mostly in the EU, if I'm right. I wonder what more you think the European countries actually can do to combat wildlife trafficking, even if it doesn't reach their shores as directly as it does other countries, and perhaps in training and helping build intelligence sharing capabilities and so on for the countries that are more affected?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the Wildlife Justice Commission for allowing me to speak. The Born Free Foundation, we work on a lot of policy and public engagement. And whilst I'm not always involved in the wildlife trade and trafficking issues, I tend to focus more on the EU policy, but also tourism policy. And I think it's quite, I think, quite useful to have that different view on things, rather than being immersed in the same topics all the time. So the work that we've been doing in EU has been very much based on capacity building, identifying different expertise, and bringing those expertise together. So one example that I'd like to draw on is the EU Action Plan Against Wildlife Trafficking, which unfortunately, nobody's mentioned so far. This is, I think, a nice blueprint that could be replicated in other regions of the world, where we've identified different governments, different agencies, NGOs, academics, experts, who all have a vested interest in addressing wildlife trafficking. And they come together in a multifaceted action plan that will be delivered across the EU, but also have influence on countries outside the EU. And I think such a plan, hopefully that it will work, can be replicated in other regions. And what we have done at Born Free is to propose a similar action plan within the Gulf states in the Middle East. Because as we all know, it's a well-known, but largely uninvestigated transit hub for wildlife trafficking. So I think that's the kind of policies we need to have in action in order to have a bigger impact on these issues.
Thanks for those thoughts, Daniel Turner. Very pleased to see Polly Higgins with us. With just a tiny bit of delay, we only just began our conversation. So you haven't missed very much. And I was saying earlier that you are barrister for the Earth Community Trust. And I know as part of your work, you strongly advocate for a specific law. Tell us what it is, what it entails, and how it relates to trying to put a stop to the illegal wildlife trafficking that takes place.
Firstly, thank you very much. It's a delight to be here. And apologies for the slight delay getting here. What I'm advocating is for ecocide to be recognized as an international crime, to criminalize extensive damage, destruction to and loss of ecosystems. And of course, wildlife trade gives rise to a wider international crime of ecocide here.
Well, on this note, I want to move perhaps for a second to a video that we have from the Democratic Republic of the Congo and Cosma Wilingula, and see what the impact is for people living in that country. Interesting. One of the main points made by Mr. Wilingula, Polly Higgins, is the growing means at the disposal of wildlife traffickers and poachers. He says no African country is able to confront these networks. He goes on to say that these people need to be prosecuted and treated as criminals in international courts. So putting on your barrister hat for a moment, how feasible, how useful might it be to contemplate this type of scenario where cases are brought against traffickers in international courts here in The Hague, for example?
Well, firstly, one of the biggest problems Vietnam has is that in fact, it does have ecocide in its criminal penal code. It was the very first country to put it in place back in, I think, 1992. For those of you who spoke French, you will have heard that he used the phrase ecocide. This is the largest form of ecocide that's happening to them. And it's not just an ecological ecocide, but a cultural ecocide as well, the destruction of their communities. Now, when you're dealing with national ecocide, there's only so far you can go with prosecutions at a national level of your own national companies. But this is a transnational issue. And of course, when we're dealing with corporations coming in and illegal wildlife trade passing through many different agencies, then the prosecutions have to be wider than just a national remit. And indeed, if a country is hidebound and either unable or unwilling to bring its own prosecutions for whatever reason, then to rely on the international legal community to give assistance on that is hugely, hugely important. In effect, this is missing crime for Vietnam, in particular, when it deals with something like wildlife trade. It would give the international legal support that they require.
Of course, there's the issue of lack of jurisdiction, though, many would say. But I wonder, Daniel Turner, how much assistance European courts can give in one form or another? Because there was a real cry for help there in that statement by Mr. Wilingula. An underlying issue beyond the lack of political will, many would argue, is also the scarcity of resources dedicated to fighting illegal wildlife crime. How can you come in?
Well, I think, you know, it's not a case of, we're looking for solutions here. And I think the solutions, we've already got the solutions. We've already got the people in this room and elsewhere that are the experts. We've already got the networks that exist. We've got plans of actions in Europe. We've got entities like United for Wildlife headed by the British Royal Family. You know, you've got all those entities already existing. And I think what needs to happen is greater collaboration. Already identified is the lack of dialogue between different, whether it's judiciary or prosecution, or between different countries. More work needs to be done on addressing those easy wins, like improving communication, dialogue, facilitating discussions such as we've had for these last two days. And we need to have more of that, and less of trying to think what the solutions are. Because I really think we've already got the solutions. We just need to enhance them better.
Yeah, embrace them better. And obviously, as you say, implement the laws that are already there. But Polly Higgins, just again, briefly going back to the issue of what, how much support African countries can hope to get from international courts to address this efficiently?
Well, this is actually very pertinent right at the moment with the International Criminal Court. The Assembly of State Parties is sitting this week and next week, which is why I'm in The Hague. And the ICC itself has actually announced just last month that they are prioritizing, they're going to move forward in prioritizing environmental crime within the existing international criminal context. Of course, that limits, is limited. It's only under war crimes, crimes against humanity and crimes of aggression. And they have made it very explicit that they are calling on other states and other agencies to come forward and create the missing laws that they require so that they can actually take action, for instance, in these places. And I'm very curious, I mean, unfortunately, I didn't hear this yesterday, I wasn't able to be here, but I think it's Mary Rice, I heard that she was talking about, from the International Environment Agency, changing cultural norms and customs and widening the remit. She was talking about slavery as well. You know, there's a whole knock-on adverse impact that happens here when you have wildlife illegal trading. It has knock-on impact on communities, rising escalating rates of prostitution, of rape, of deaths, of murder. And this is a wider ecocide, if you will. So there's very much an appetite within the International Criminal Court, really driven by Fatou Ben Suda, who has made it very public that she's inviting in and she's prioritizing, looking at and looking at the specific aspect within existing crime and inviting in more crime, recognizing the culture as well as the ecological ecocide. And that, if I could just say this as a last point, is really critical here, because actually what you're doing is you're providing the tools of assistance to Africa that mostly require it. And it shifts the focus from, you could say, 20th century crime to very much, this is 21st century crime that we're looking at in a very big way.
What about the role, Daniel Turner, of well-established institutions here in Europe such as Interpol? Is it receptive to wildlife trafficking related issues? Should it be doing more? What kind of role can it take on?
Well, we've got Interpol, which is global, but in Europe, we've got Europol, and there are officials here. And, you know, obviously, they do play a role, and they do have intelligence, and that intelligence has to be shared effectively. And that's why, you know, referring before to the EU Action Plan, they're very much a component of that process. And sharing of intelligence and information is the way forward. A colleague before mentioned that, you know, information is expensive to get, and we hold on to it, you know, cards to chest. But I think if we want to make a difference here, we have to recognize that we all have valuable information, but we need to share it. And we need to build the capacities of those that need to better enforce legislation. And by sharing that intelligence and that information and expertise, we can build that capacity. You know, it's a global struggle and a global effort, and we need to pull together irrespective of how much things cost or how important information is to us personally.
And I'm curious to hear the thoughts of our panel members, Judge Leona Ola, perhaps. We've been talking so much about African countries. I wonder what you make of the gaps that are there and that could be sort of filled in the best way?
Probably a question more than a comment. Polly, on sentencing. We're hearing that Vietnam had a penal court which was undergoing review. That review has been suspended. But I'm just wondering, in terms of the sentences to emit out to poachers, carriers, traders, users, would it make a difference if those sentences were stiff? Would it be deterrent? Would it be useful? Would it help at all in this fight, in your view?
Often this happens. We use our prosecutions to send out a message to society. We do this in the UK courts as well. In fact, there was a huge people trafficking trial that was just concluded two weeks ago. And it's really about how you're messaging out. Because when you're dealing with prosecutions, and especially when we're looking at the International Criminal Court, that already has an enormous amount of pressures on it, then you use cases to actually identify what it is that you're messaging out as acceptable and unacceptable within cultural norms. And this gets back to Mary Rice's point, actually. So yes, it's important, without a doubt. And in fact, the Nuremberg War Tribunals, not every one was prosecuted. But there were a number of CEOs and directors of companies who were illegally trading, if you will, in the making of the gases for the internment camps and so on and so forth. And that was to send out a message that that industry will no longer be tolerated, and we have an appetite and we're ready to now take more prosecutions. Guatemala has set up special high-complex courts to deal with human rights trafficking issues. And again, it's this thing of actually, it's the kind of shooting the arrow through and landing in the center and saying, this is what we will no longer tolerate in international criminal law. And you subvert normalities. It's no longer the norm for it to continue unabated. So very important in this, yeah.
And then I had Cosma speaking about the ICC. Well, Africa is busy moving out of the ICC. So I'm not too sure that that's a viable alternative for us. South Africa is moving out. This morning, I think, Gambia gave notice. Kenya is preparing to get out. Burundi is getting out. I'm not sure that's an alternative that we can pursue in the line of this, what's the word, exodus out of the ICC. I don't know.
But so do African countries have any excuse for not doing more to prosecute?
I wouldn't say that. I think yesterday, we had that each country has its own action plan. Kenya does, Tanzania does. And we had this morning that, I think, from international, the agency on, what is her name? Grace, I think, Mary Rice, that there are movements towards the DPP's offices, working towards more capacity for their prosecutors. And so there is action being undertaken. But I think it's more to do with political goodwill or lack of it than anything else. And I think the interventions that we've had since yesterday in Africa will certainly be useful in the long term. I'm not too sure that the ICC would be the answer. But I think it's more capacity and more goodwill and more action on the ground and in the countries than anything else. more goodwill and more action on the ground and in the countries than anything else.
And indigenous response. Thank you very much. Any more questions? Misha, go ahead.
Yep, I've got three questions, which I'd like to put to Daniel. First of all, one about the EU Action Plan on wildlife trafficking. You said that nobody has mentioned it. Why has nobody mentioned it here? What is the EU doing wrong? And is the EU engaging specifically with Vietnam, China, or any of the other countries that we've been talking about here with regard to the case that we've been discussing of the hub in Nekhe? So that's the first question. I'll go through them, because some of them are quite simple, yes and no. The second one is, which countries in the Gulf are acting as a hub for material coming out of Africa? And thirdly, you say that we have the solutions, which is great, but we here on the panel were trying to assess what recommendations we're putting forward. And we don't necessarily know which solutions are most effective. So can you give me a one, two, three of what we need to be doing as the absolute priorities as a minimum to start moving on this in a way that isn't yet being done?
So feel free to take this on.
Wow.
From your order of preference, Daniel.
Well, I think on the action plan perspective, I think it's relatively new as far as an initiative. We've still got discussions happening in the European Parliament on the topic. MEPs, Members of the European Parliament, such as Catherine Beard, for example, is pushing forward various plans of action within the overall plan. The European Commission announced the plan at CITES this year, which is only a few, you know, a month or so ago. You know, it's maybe not, it's not the answer to everything, but I think what it does do is to bring together all the different players, whether it's the NGOs internationally or in locality, whether it's the judiciary, prosecution, the enforcement agencies. It builds capacities where they're needed. It identifies where the gaps are and then seeks to fill them. And looking outwards as well as inwards into the EU, so outwards, identifying where the capacities need to be addressed in source countries and also in the demand countries. But the importance of it is it brings people together, and the different attributes of those people can be better enhanced by that collaboration. So it's not necessarily, I think it's far too soon to discuss whether it's been a success or not. Let's give it a bit of time to see whether that idea that has been embraced by a number of the people here actually delivers.
I can't help but observe that one of the things that people have said repeatedly is we don't have any time, that time is one thing we don't have. And so one of the reasons, I suspect, and I'm just putting this out there, that no one's heard of the, or no one's mentioned the EU wildlife trafficking action, is it's like any other EU ventures, is it simply takes too long to get the whole thing rolling. And so it may even be worth lobbying the EU to try and actually speed up, because of course, potentially, I mean, we know from the Pelly Amendment that one of the key things is really direct engagement with countries where this is going on. And the EU still has a huge amount of economic and diplomatic and political influence. It's just getting it to act upon it, which appears so difficult.
Fully agree. And that's one of the roles of Bormfree and the other NGOs in the room. I mean, it is, we bite the heels of both the politicians and the EU officials, and that's our role. But I think this kind of plan is the right way forward for all the different regions of the world. And from the Gulf perspective, working directly with airlines such as Etihad, for example, we've identified that there needs to be greater capacity in Abu Dhabi Airport, which doesn't have any form of transit policing at all, whilst Dubai, just down the road, they've had so many seizures through customs-focused efforts. You know, it's the weakest link, so clearly, it needs to be addressed.
Thank you very much.
Well, thanks to my second question there. What about the priorities as far as you're concerned? One, two, three.
Well, there are lots of other people in this room that can input into that more than I can. But I think from my perspective, it's education, collaboration, and capacity building, which needs to be the focus.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. In just a few words before we close, Polly, any remarks, any one, two, threes of steps that should be taken, especially when you keep in mind the time issue and how we could best manage our time moving forward?
There's definitely a great need to be seen to be taking action on this, without a doubt. And this wouldn't be happening here over these last few days if that hadn't happened. So highlighting the issue, shining a light on it, is very important. It's also, it's about speed, how we can move really, really fast here and actually shift these normatives. Obviously, we're all incoming from different perspectives on this. From my perspective, I actually think that what we're proposing into the ICC with conversations over the next few weeks is something that allows Africa, for instance, dealing specifically with this issue, a form of protection rather than a form of prosecution, which is, of course, their biggest grievance at the moment. We're being prosecuted. We're not having the protection we require. So this is very much a moment where speed is of the essence. That's my key message.
Acting now and finding the right balance. Polly Higgins and Daniel Turner, thank you both very much indeed for being here and for your comments on this issue. And if I could just, before we take a break and before the accountability panel members who are still here with us join their colleagues in private session to engage in those deliberations to look at the best solutions moving ahead, if I could just ask Mr. Asner, who made the presentation yesterday on the map of facts, whether he has any final comments to make? I believe he does. And reflections before the AP members leave us to start with their deliberations.
Thanks. Thank you. I wrote down a bunch of notes right here. So I want to actually, I have three areas I just want to talk about briefly. There were a couple of things discussed today that I just want to touch on briefly during the conversation this morning. Then we have some new evidence that we uncovered last night regarding the situation in Nekhe that I want to present to the panel. And then I jotted down some additional thoughts for the panel with respect to recommendations for you to consider when you're preparing your recommendations. So three points at the beginning of things that I, just my comments on some of the discussion today. There was a question, both from the panel and then from a number of, I think, the other speakers regarding organized crime networks. How do you go about dismantling, taking out the full network, the full hierarchy? How do you get the kingpins? And I think there was a discussion that that was not done here. It's true, it was not done here. It's important, though, to remember the limitations of what was done here. It's a non-governmental entity, and there's a limitation to what they can do legally and practically. Legally, they cannot buy these illegal goods, because that would be a crime. And so you can't buy them, and if you can't buy them, then that oftentimes limits your ability to work your way up the chain. And they also don't have arrest authority. And that makes it very difficult for them to work their way up the chain through cooperation. Now, I think there was a discussion, at one point, somebody mentioned something, the fact of that there are no instances, or nobody could remember an instance, where a big international wildlife trafficking case was dismantled. There is an example. It's the case of United States versus Benjus, one of the cases I was involved in when I was in the government in the United States. It was a joint US and South African operation. We ended up taking out the South African operation, or the South Africans took it out. I think there were 14 arrests over there. They took out the entire operation over there. The kingpins in the United States were taken out. The factory was seized. And that was multiple arrests. It was a massive scheme to illegally overharvest South African rock lobster and bring it into the United States. And I think it's considered one of the more significant wildlife poaching cases in history. So it can be done. How do you do it? And I think this is actually quite telling, because it may be something that may be useful for us thinking forward, going forward. Well, one way you might be able to do this is to develop cooperating witnesses. And that's what we did in Benjus, because plainly, the kingpins are the ones, the people up the supply chains, they're the ones who are shielding themselves from the view of the authorities that are trying to do the investigation. And the way you do these sort of cases, you do low-level arrests and you work your way up the chain. But to do that, you have to, first off, have arrest power, which only governments have. And you also have to give the low-level people an incentive to cooperate. All right? Well, that works in the United States and South Africa, because in the United States, you have very hefty sentences, and you have a rule of law where if you're caught, you're going to go to jail. In South Africa, you have very hefty sentences and a rule of law that if you're caught, you're going to go to jail. But when you have an environment that is pervaded through or riddled through with corruption, it makes it extremely difficult to work your way up these chains, because the individuals don't necessarily have an incentive to cooperate. So I agree that it's something that you need to pay attention to. We need to take down these networks, and that will weave into one of my recommendations at the end. Briefly, about what the EU Action Plan should be, new laws. I'll give you one, and this is, I go around the world and beating the table about this one. The EU should adopt the LACI Act. It's simple. Let me just explain, most of you probably know what the LACI Act is. It's a very old statute in the United States. It's over probably 110 years old now. It makes it a crime to import, traffic, sale, et cetera, in the United States, any fish, wildlife, or plant that is taken in violation of local law, including foreign law. So it's not just that something violates CITES. It could be that a fish is overharvested in Venezuela, off the coast of Venezuela. If it's brought into the United States and it's sold there, you have committed a crime in the United States. If every country had a LACI Act, that would greatly enhance the ability of countries to fight wildlife trafficking, not just focused on the Appendix 1 species, but all species. And that would also enhance the rule of law. So that was my second point. Third, very briefly, there were some questions about the testing of ivory, and Sam Wasser gave some testimony earlier. I understand, I was told this morning, that Sam Wasser actually presently is in Vietnam and is doing training and has been doing some testing on the ivory that was recently seized. So plainly, that's a good development. All right, so what I want to do now, that was my comments with respect to some of the things I heard this morning, what I want to do now is show a little evidence that we developed last night. We went back to the Wildlife Justice Commission's offices, and I had the annoying idea of making the investigators hop online and see if, despite all of this hearing and despite the raid on Saturday, whether, in fact, anything was still going online. So if we could pull up the WeChat. Okay, so this was at 20:34 last night, 8:34 last night. And this is the WeChat profile page of Person of Interest number five. As you might recall, she is the one who was in PNK4. We first encountered her in Carl Amman's video from 2012, and we saw her repeatedly throughout the presentation, all the way through the 8th of October. She was still functioning last night, or at least her WeChat page was up. I should note that WeChat, I'm told, is not something like an open forum, but rather you have to be invited to the WeChat forum in order to engage with people. So if we can go to the next page, we see that the last posting was the 11th of November, which I believe is Friday or Saturday? Friday. If we go to the next page, you see that one of the things that she posted were tiger canines. The next one is rhino horn libation cups. And then the next one, again, this is on the 10th of November, tiger canines. We also pulled the WeChat profile page of Person of Interest number 31. This is the daughter-in-law of Person of Interest number five. I think we saw pictures of her in the room at PNK4. So if you notice for a moment, actually, go up, if you notice, there is a number that's blacked out in the middle of the screen, it's 0084. That is the country code of Vietnam. And if you look at the top, it's 2032, so this was captured last night. So if we go to the next page, this is posted on the 12th of November, which I believe is Saturday. If we go to the next page, we see that these ivory, or what appear to be ivory earrings, were posted on 9:45 Vietnamese time, I'm sorry, 9:45 on the 12th of November Hague time, which I'm told is 13:45, I'm sorry, 15:35, 3:45 on Saturday. So Saturday afternoon, this was posted. And then if we go to the next page, what we have here is a carved, helmeted hornbill bird carving. And this is a CITES Appendix 1 creature, which is, again, posted on Saturday. And then finally, on, again, the 12th of November, we have 2.56 kilograms of rhino horn offkets cuts that are offered on this WeChat page. So that's the new evidence that we uncovered last night, and plainly, I think that they will continue to be focusing on this. I had a couple of thoughts for the advisor, the accountability panel, for you to consider. And it's really five basic thoughts as you prepare to deliberate, which I know that you'll be going to do that now. My first recommendation is unfortunately not going to be very popular. And I'd like, I would suggest that, to the extent you can, that you focus on this case rather than global policy issues. I think that there is a temptation often to try and solve all the world's problems, and I think it's very important that we have these discussions. Demand reduction is hugely important. Stopping corruption, of course, is key to all of this. Talking about new structures in order to fight wildlife crime, of course, is key to all of this. But I think what this case is about is a specific case going on in Vietnam, and I think ultimately, you're going to be most valuable if you give suggestions and recommendations focused on this. Now, of course, I can't be that limited. And of course, I come from a legal background where you focus on case and controversy and you don't give advisory opinions. But I think we're not a super legislator, and while certainly your recommendations will be important, I think they're most important focused on the work that was done here. So that's my first one. And that's the one that I think is going to be somewhat unpopular, but, sorry. The second is that I think a recommendation that I would like you to make, or I would suggest that you make, is that the Vietnamese go after the network, that they build the case against the whole chain. And I think you're absolutely right from the comments, both from the panel and from the audience, that this investigation did not uncover the whole chain, did not uncover the kingpins. We don't know whether we have the kingpins or not. We don't know the supply chain. But encouraging the Vietnamese to use the usual sort of law enforcement techniques that you have from narcotics cases, from mafia cases, to go after the whole chain, that, of course, is something that I think should go into your recommendations. The third thing is, I think they should buy and test samples. I think that was something that came out today. But one thing that the Wildlife Justice Commission did not do was do any buys. You could do buys and then conduct sample You could do buys and then conduct samples of those and work your way in and try and break the chain that way. I think that would be a very wise thing to do. I think they should devote adequate resources. And there was some suggestion today that what you need to do is have more resources. And I've never seen any group that was interested in a particular area that asked for fewer resources. People always want more resources. I myself am not a big fan of big teams. When I took out the Benjus case in the United States, it was me and two agents who were the primary folks in South Africa. It was Bruce Morrison, who was the prosecutor, and two agents in South Africa. I personally feel that having dedicated, focused people can be better. Sometimes there are times to have more agents thrown at things, but it does tend to lead to a dilution of intensity and attention. But that's why I said adequate resources. Different countries, different cultures do things in different ways, so I would recommend adequate resources. In my world, smaller was better. And then the final thing is corruption. And this is a big policy area, but I'm not asking to put in your suggestions that you get rid of corruption, you know, and then that will solve the problem. Plainly, we have to get rid of corruption, but how do you solve this case right now? And how do we help Vietnam with this case right now? And I think one of the recommendations you can do is, this community, right here, can help fight corruption by shining a bright light on each of these arrests. What happens in law enforcement, what happens in these cases, is that somebody gets arrested and the case goes away. But if you send some 22-year-old in there to sit there and blog on the case after the arrest, to follow every arrest all the way through, and shine a bright light on it, then this community can make sure that these people are brought to justice. And then that also gives them more of an incentive to cooperate and hopefully bring down the whole network. So those are my five suggestions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Asner. And with that, request to panel members to focus on this very specific case of Vietnam. Let's gauge to see just how popular or not it is. And also ask panel members whether they have any question for Mr. Asner at this stage. None? Okay. All right. None news is good news at this stage. So thank you, Mr. Asner. And we will... So we will now break for lunch to allow our accountability panel members, who are still here with us, to deliberate in private session with their colleagues. They will do so for the next two hours, I believe. Everyone else, in the meantime, is invited to join us for lunch. We will all reconvene here in one hour for our interactive session, where we invite you all, members of the public, to ask questions, make comments, and contribute recommendations. Thank you.